For the end, please rise to the occasion with allegiance and get your.
Deputy Mayor Jim Bernard.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for your love. Thank you for being able to solve my. Please protect us and guide us to protect our city business, give us the wisdom to make this city better, protect it from the law. Also, through all three protectors throughout the world. So much thanks for all of this kind of people as well as other people like Afghanistan. Do what you can to do well, to be serious, you know. Prepare that hopefully we can be our American dollar safe. Give our kids, prepare their children. Please protect their children that they're truthful and responsibly presented on each day.
Man, that.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and licit and just.
Stephen. You get a roll call when you get a change.
Okay.
Farther behind and and when that happens, you know. It's a when you can't get the grit out because you're too busy fixing this, grit gets in over here now caused up. It'll clog up the. The pump and then from the pump to go to the digester and then if you don't get it there, then from the digester. It goes into the press and then you just got a mess. I mean, so just just really short staffed and then that. Three guys try to take care of four plants. The D E P comes out, looks at and tells us, you know, hey, let's see if we fix this or whatever, stuff like that. Really useful for you, a a a fourth, a fourth person.
I was gonna ask, um, uh, the reason why, I think, like I said at the last meeting, the reason why we can't maintain. Staff and hire new staff is because of the low pay that we're paying. There's twenty eight thousand eight hundred is about how much an hour? Fourteen to twelve dollars? So but yes, it's less than, and if a person, we have got a family of two. They they just can't, they can't support their family on on this.
About thirteen eighty an hour.
How much is?
Roughly thirteen eighty.
Thirteen eighty?
Yeah, yeah, that's that's what happened in the last, you know, we had to work in here.
So 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 let's keep, and I know you all are probably against dipping into the reserve funds, but. We could consider dipping into the reserve funds now. Uh, to pay people a decent salary so we can maintain our staff. And then we can spruce up the city and then that will entice people to come, want to move and stay in Avon Park. I mean, this is, this is thirteen dollars and eighty cents an hour is not sufficient pay, in my opinion.
Okay, I have a question for Rick.
Yes.
It sounded like you said that this operator position was mainly a maintenance person. Why would you need to pay somebody forty five thousand if they're doing mainly mowing and maintenance? Is there other duty besides that?
Well, yeah, well, yes, sir, you know. Right now I have, I have the operator split, so I have one guy try to take care of all water plants. I don't know if you can see here.
I'm sorry, I I get about it.
Um, and I got two guys with wastewater plant. The wastewater plant is the highest rate because you've got trucks coming in and. You know, I don't know, I'd love to take you over someday and show you, you know, everything goes on there and the time it takes to run a plant. But the wastewater plant pretty much takes two guys. I mean, unfortunately, that's just the way it is. Uh, with the set of toddlers, had we didn't have set the toddlers, we'd probably be okay. But with the center taller coming in, the maintenance it takes to run that part of the process. We really need a another person and and to be honest with you. A maintenance person would be fine. The downfall of a maintenance person is if we had a Corona breakout there, that's why I have my operators separated. I have one operator run just one place. I have two operators running the wastewater plant because if they're all working together to get it. We don't have a licensed operator runs a plant. So therefore I gotta get somebody from rural water, somebody else come in, sign our books. While I run it and another guy cut her on it. Uh, so those were my thoughts is, you know, a. An operator, because, you know, we call them operator, but they're not just operators.
I got you.
They're operator maintenance and that's, that's what I would want. I would not want somebody to come in. For fault loading that sits in the plant, takes it to be lab samples. No, so that's not what we want.
So.
That's real quick. Who's doing the mowing and stuff like that?
They are. Well, they 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 mow the 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 bat wing that we got, they mow that. They get on the tractor, they diss the ponds, I mean, you know, large equipment, I mean, the slope over we got. They take the John Deere and ride out in the middle of pond and they sit there and they mow it. I mean, they they do everything, the greasing. Uh, let's see, last year we pulled a rotor, we paid, I think, twelve minutes, nineteen thousand for a company to come do it. We did it ourselves in-house, cost us four thousand dollars. We do a lot more in-house today than we used to do outside.
All right, I'm sorry to talk to you.
So the operational, the operator, the additional operating at forty five thousand is addition to how many already? Two?
Three.
Three, we have three now?
Yes, ma'am, we have three, three licensed operators, dual license.
Two licenses, so we want a total, you're asking for a total of four now?
Yes, ma'am.
One more.
Yes, ma'am.
And each of them at forty five thousand?
Um, no, ma'am, they're 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 pay ranges change or are different, their longevity and stuff.
Okay.
We we currently have three, two are dual operators, right?
All three are dual operators.
Okay, all three are dual operators, so we're just looking for the one position. I think so. One point that Rick was basically making is that it would be hard for somebody to only do maintenance out there if they don't understand how this thing operates. They kind of need to know how everything flows in order to actually do the maintenance, is that?
Yes, yes.
So what the the twenty, the three up into the top, the C and D technicians, what can they do?
Okay, C and D is is flex and distribution. So that's all, that's all the piping around. So you got all your water mains, all your wastewater mains, your gravity system, your lift stations, you got thirty eight lift stations. All these stations have to be maintained. If we we have pipe, all this new pour coming all the way in here, so we have water the same way. So let's just look at. So Sunday, I called you morning, it was seven o'clock in the morning, we had a maintenance break, that's how many dollars? Our guys came in and fixed it. Contracted out, contracted.
So.
Refix all the utilities. The only time I had contract done was when I had to have Hal come in. Because that was eighteen feet deep, we didn't have a tractor to make up, they got our fix that.
So why aren't you asking for more money for these C and D technicians?
First time I've been in here.
Ask for it. Because, wait a minute, because of my understanding that the one person that he had there left because there wasn't enough.
Oh, yes, that he he left.
So so.
What a C D L.
Yeah, we we will, we will be shooting ourselves in the foot if we did not offer these people more funds.
I think, I think funds and training, I mean, you know, you know, I have two guys that have C D Ls, that's it. And one guy is on call, has to have a C D L, we have to have that backup a lot. We have a backup, we have, you know, a manhole that's starting to boil over, we've got to have that back, that back on. We only have two drivers. That's it. So those two guys, they're they're on call two weeks, the one guy's off, the other guy's on the call two weeks, they're just constantly back and forth and call.
So what would be a decent pay?
Can I have some time to research that?
Okay, sure.
We, I really just don't want to.
I'm trying to not let Mark talk because I know he's probably gonna shoot you down.
No, 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 of course, anytime you want to give, anytime you want to give the troops a pay raise, I'm all for it, but. I know you are, but as we told you the last meeting and then unfortunately Melody had to be out and David's been on a few days too. But we're gonna work something up and bring it to you hopefully next Monday across the board to see what you think of.
Rick. That's your question. When you do, you say you have two that has C D Ls and they need those licenses.
Yes, ma'am.
So when you're, when you're bringing people aboard as technicians, are we actually sending them to that train or they must come with the C D L?
There's, there's nothing set up to do that currently. So we need to get something set up, but if we could get them to do the training.
Absolutely.
We 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 do, but finding people with C D Ls is very hard because they pay a lot of money at other places and Rick has told me in the past, he's got people that aren't even interested. Even if we send them, but it's something he brought up to me. Friday and then this morning, that maybe, you know, but again, it's gotta be over there, but we can't pick and choose. So you get to go get a C D L, of course, and. Somebody gets C D L and says, I'm gonna go work for truckers. So it all sounds easy, but it's not, but again, with the. David taking the lead, right, David, we're, are we looking at how we can move everybody up and seeing if you're good with that?
You know what, Mark, when you're saying that if they get the C D Ls, they might leave, we under, I understand that really. Because when they got in there to took the department, y'all stole the sheriff department. I mean, so people do, but 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 just this real quick, Mark, I I agree with Councilwoman Gray that if you're making it look better. And you got better pay, they might want to stay. So all that, we just.
We we agree and, you know, at the end of the day, people are gonna leave for different reasons, whether they pay or not, but yes, is our pay low? David will tell you the first week goes here, I said, we pay people ten dollars and six cents an hour to go mow the lawn, it's ridiculous.
Absolutely, I agree.
Seeing you're all for it, we are too, and we'll work it up and remember, we got a union and we have steps and that we have to look at.
Very certainly, yes, sir.
But we will certainly get it. Now, the, just, the, um. The operators are step ninety five, other than one person, maybe step a hundred. People in the past have made the steps up or scratched your head, but they're the highest paid, right, David, other than one person, maybe one hundred, but that's. Kind of made up on shooting in there, but they're there, the operators are our highest paid. Okay, page three. Page three is your fund revenues. Well, I made it so small, I gotta put this glass on, but we're gonna have a decrease this year of twenty six thousand three hundred dollars. But then we got almost six million dollars in there and you see she's got the revenues, the five eight nine two nine hundred minus the expenses. Um, leaves over two million dollars, so there is pretty adequate money in the reserves. For this. This fund. Uh, this is a breakdown here, the wastewater and in the water, uh, forty seven percent versus fifty three percent. And this year we have lost some money in the, in the water when we gave everybody, I think, the sixty dollars and then when we didn't turn their water out, so they washed their hands, we lost mine there. Uh, Melody had brought up, we may be able to recover that if we want with the American Rescue line, so it might be something. By all means, she will, as soon as she gets a chance, she will bring it forward and. The, uh. This just gives a breakdown of the reserve funds. And if you ask me, what some of them, the irrigation, I'm not sure, but the other ones is your Sebring Ridge Water, Crystal Lake, Lake Damon. And, um. Tapping fees, Rick could probably add some more on this and, um, and the impact fees, the seven thousand, but it's just kind of the total of what the. Total water revenues comes from. Again, the next page, page six, we're showing an increase of a hundred and fifty thousand, um, dollars there based on year to date. And then you can see below, she, nine years, I've got her notes, so I know if I'm bottom, you've got. Probably, did you print out exactly what you got here?
Yes.
Okay, I've got, I've got her notes here, just shows the actual fifty years prior, you have the question on years prior, I can give that. Uh, the next, the irrigation revenue, there's going to be an increase of fourteen hundred dollars. You got a note on here, billings out of the day, so. Sebring Ridge revenue increase of thirteen thousand. Actually, last year it went down seven thousand. That's probably due to a wall on the. Rick reached and he believes you're right, man. Uh, next, Crystal Lake, increase of about two thousand dollars. Last year was an increase of about eight thousand, the year before that was, um, lost to almost twelve thousand. Lake Damon, um, stays, it looks like it's gonna stay the same based on the estimate year to date. Last year it went up about thirty five hundred, two years prior to that it went down over here. Reconnection fee revenue, um, according to year to date, she, at this page, it's gonna stay about the same. Last year it went up by eleven thousand dollars, two years before that it went down. Hydrant sprinkler revenue, um, based on year to date, which is almost nine dollars, you'd expect that to stay the same, about ten thousand, not down five hundred last year. Water tapping fees, based on year to date, is projected to go down a thousand dollars. Last year it sure went down twenty four thousand. Before that, one third, fortunately, I don't have news for that one. Water impact fees, year, looking at year to date, she's estimated in seventy thousand dollars. Which is on down, you can see about fifteen thousand, at least estimated to. Water miscellaneous fees, gonna decrease about twelve thou, or twelve hundred dollars. Wastewater revenues, um, she's got it broken down and see the total of two million seven hundred fifty three thousand five hundred. She's showing a sewer revenue, gonna decrease two hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. Last year it went up two hundred and seventy one thousand, so last year it went up that much, this year it's decreased that much. I don't have the answer for why it would be that much last year and then again, that much to go down, could have been a grant or something like that, it might have been. Setage revenue is, uh, looking at an increase based on year to date at, um, almost five hundred and seventy two thousand, year to date, went thirty three thousand. Ricky, you got anything on the setage revenue? Crystal Lake sewer revenue, anticipating going down about two thousand dollars based on where we are currently, currently at a hundred and fifteen thousand. Lake Damon is estimated based on where we are at the thirty one thousand to probably be the same around thirty six thousand dollars. In the past five years, the fluctuation went thirty five and thirty seven. Um, penalties, gonna decrease, I mean, gonna increase forty five thousand dollars. Last year with a decrease of about forty eight, so we're back where we were back in nineteen twenty. Sewer tapping fees, projected based on year to date to decrease about five hundred dollars. Sewer impact fees, showing a decrease of about, based on current year to date. I mean, gonna increase twenty thousand dollars. I'm gonna have to get rid of this, showing you the date.
Year to date, we got fifty thousand.
Yeah, that's what I say that, that's, I got a question for her on why it's showing you the date at fifty. Maybe you type them. Sewer other income, showing an increase of about five hundred dollars, currently about thirty six, thirty, about thirty eight hundred dollars. Leads into the expenses, there's a breakdown of water utility billing. Sewer services, distribution, water sewer, combined services and the work center for a total of, um, over three and a half million. Water utility billing services, showing a decrease of, um, almost point two thousand dollars. With the year to date, it was about three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. She's got here the draft still being protected because it's, we were just talking about, um, increase in salaries, which obviously would then. Increase the fight and the contributions and all that for, um, retirement, that's why that's in. We'll get back to you hopefully next Monday on that. Water utility billing services, operating costs. Do you have any questions on that little number she's got out this side? I have her notes here, so if you have a question on why something's going down, like. Just for instance, accounting and auditing, historically, accounting and auditing expenses have been under ten grand, so she's, she's lowered that. And you find in here. That's a lot of them that showed down is because when she actually looked at historically, we just think there was probably too much money sitting in the circle. Any more questions on this one?
What was the, um, what's that time in all rentals and leases? Number, so, number six.
Historically, rentals and leases have been under five thousand based on actual cost, year to date is forty four hundred and fifty dollars. Sewer system, distribution, planings, expenses, looking to decrease a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. Again, the same thing with the salary. It will be projected higher than expenses. Sewer, um, service, distribution, plan expenses, operating costs, the same thing on this, there's something that jumps out at you. I've got one through fifteen here to answer your questions, or Melody will answer them. Number one, historically, professional services have been under twenty thousand dollars, Kimley Horn Engineering Services, the capital project, year to date is, uh, a hundred and thirty thousand.
So you said year to date is a hundred and thirty thousand?
Yes, what she has, there you go. That that includes the headwork trap. Engineering. Yeah, that was sixty three thousand, yeah, so you wouldn't have that again.
I was just curious as to why we're increasing that much, you know, and.
If we build a new water plant, it'll be ten times that.
I knew it was sixty three earlier. Any more questions on that? Basically, same thing double two. Historically, contractual services have been under ten thousand, Kimley Horn Engineering Services for capital projects, there was eleven thousand dollars. And what we've found is some of these professional services or contractual services have been taken out of the correct account, which we're gonna fix. We just. Sometimes, I I, what we found is, well, it fits there, well, you know, they actually tell you what fits there and what doesn't fit there, but it's not that big of a deal, we can make adjustments and move it, but. With Melody here, full-time, you know, we'll see us on a daily basis, it won't happen, in fact now, before they enter things, I make them, anything that's, that they're not sure of, make them get the melody, make sure they take it out, it's very fun, and then she checks it. Now I don't have to check it, because she does check it. Water sewer combining service expenses. Year to date is one point, almost two million, that's a decrease of forty-three thousand dollars. The. Water combined services expenses continued, again, I've got the notes out this side, if you're interested, like other contractual services. It was Kimley Horn and Civil Service Engineering Services sixty-eight, which when she was going over this with us earlier, asked why Civil Service are there, because the only thing we've used in force since I found you is stormwater. So that probably was taken out of the wrong place, I'll have to fix those. Because Kimley Horn is the only engineering company we use for water and waste water treatment. I don't know, Jim, I've asked that same question. We use them quite often, but Rick could answer further on one of these, Carl or Paul Stenau, I mean, I'll tell you, like, Jameson, he'll be on later, but. I like using the local ones when we can. Use them, but there are some things, as big as they are, I'm told that, you know, they've just got several more engineers to help them ask stuff, but Rick, you wanna add to that?
Well, I can say on behalf of it is, like the headworks, you know. They, they've got people all throughout the United States, so instead of, you know, having one source here that, that works here local, these people have gone throughout the United States and set different headworks in, so we're getting a lot more. Knowledge from Kimley Horn that, so like the project on twenty-seven, you know, Paulston and Carl Cool, so in my opinion, we should use them all, I mean, as needed, as to where they're needed at, not some sort of one, Kimberly and Horn.
Who makes that decision which one to use, you know?
Oh, not me. That was guys like me sitting here.
Okay.
Well, sometimes, like he said, there's projects that are, are local offices are small, may not be able to handle, and they, they've told us before, you know, really we can't, but. There are other projects that we should be reaching out to them or letting them work together on a project, so, and again, I'm big on using our local people and. I haven't worked as much with Paulston, but, I mean, Carl's as good as they come, and Carl does stuff that probably doesn't even charge us for, and helps us out.
Or Carl, Carl's quick to tell you, if, if that's not his area of expertise.
Correct, correct.
The only, the only question on that I would have is, you know, we have a contract with Kimley Horn, right? So what is the purpose of that contract, does that limit us in any way to choose whomever we wish? You know, I know that there was a bid process involved in that, is that them basically giving us a low bid to guarantee that they get all the work? Where are we at as far as all that goes? Just make sure that we're not violating any agreements by doing whatever we're talking about here.
Right. And there have been times, I mean, like, Rick Whalen, decided, you only need to reach out to Kimmy Horn, I said, no, I want you to reach out to Carl, I said, he can do that, Paulston can do that, so. Um, continuation operating costs. Again, if you got questions, I've got Melody's answers here, and where she's coming from the numbers.
Does she have anything on inventory items? The increase of sixty-eight then?
Yes, actually, and Rick well too, because this is an item we talked about before she had leave, it's number nine, inventory items increased for fitting and apparatuses for meters.
So, so, you know, we currently have, you know, upstairs, I don't know if you've ever been upstairs over there, but we have a lot of fittings, brass fittings, so, you know, you have your meters. Well, that's just one component of many components, it takes to install a meter. But on the other, we have blow stations with motor starters, we have pipe fittings, brass fittings, PVC fittings, blue gloves, pretty shirts. So that now we don't have anybody running everywhere getting shirts or whatever, gloves or whatever, pommers or wherever. So I put a gentleman in there to help me with that along with the back, implementing the backflow, who helps me run a warehouse now, so that the three departments pull from up there, then Andy utilizes that. So that we get better price quotes, we buy, instead of one pair of gloves, we buy fifty pairs of gloves, let's say. So we need a water cooler that don't have to run up here, so you don't have the supervisors, the guys running by the stores, they can pull in there, it's kind of a one-stop, they get it. And then when it gets signed out, signed out to the department, so if we have an after-hour break like Sunday, if we don't have parts, we can't fix it. So we have to have inventory for utilities, because things break, and when do they break? After hours.
Yep, always when you don't want them to break.
So that's, that's what that is, and I think some of the, throughout the year, some of the things that not put in the right spots.
Okay, how many breaks did we have last week for?
Six. Two six, some eights, yeah, it was in a pretty. Saturday we had a two inch, Sunday we had a six inch, Friday we, or Sunday we had an eight inch. At my McDonald's, yes, it's been. Been fun last week, I think we had about seven paid breaks last week.
Good. Uh, work center expenses. If you don't know what the work center is, don't worry, the rest of us don't either, but it's basically the catch-all, the public works where the things don't fit in. That's showing a decrease of about thirty-three hundred and sixty dollars. And the same with this one, if you got a question on the one through eleven, I've got her answers here, but you see like elec- electricity examples, I mean, she dropped five hundred, but. Just based on actual expenses, like I said, she's, she does good, she goes through it line by line, looks where. You know, year after year, you put the same dollar amount in there and you're never spending that, so why have that much in there to start with? So she's doing a really good job there. Little Rick's going into sanitation too, so. Sanitation revenues, this year projected, based on year to date, an increase of about thirty-three hundred dollars. Last year we had a decrease of sixty-nine thousand. Garbage and trash showing an increase of twenty-four thousand dollars. Year to date's about a million one. Crystal Lake garbage showing an increase of zero, it's gonna, should say about the same of eighty-six thousand dollars. Dumpster fees, increase of nine thousand dollars.
On the water and sewer out there at Crystal Lake, at places like that, where we have a lot, a lot of northerners. They put theirs on like coal for so many months a year at a certain lower price, is that correct?
They give the same order, if they, they go back up north, I mean, you know, I'm not a, difficult, so, you know, that's really good, feeling the question. I don't wanna say something wrong, so I'm not, I'm not. That'd be a Daniel question, she'll tell you that you build the same order. I've asked that many times. And also pay it on a lot of properties don't get used, so.
And the dumpster fees is an increase of nine thousand. We like those increases.
Let me ask you this question, if you may know, have we increased our dumpster fees all over the years? I knew that maybe ten or twelve years ago, there was a, a set fee for how many cubic yards they were, has that ever been changed, anybody worried that I'm not increasing these?
I don't know, last time.
Her, her, as far as I know, it's all time, there hasn't been.
Okay.
Well, it's an interesting question you raised there, because I know that we're paying more for tipping fees now than you. Want to have a scanning, so, right, maybe that's something that should be looked at.
I think all of our fees across the board, everything you feel like that, soon as we get time to sit down and that be a Melody thing, Melody's got a lot to do, and she gets her budget, she knows, and the main thing is utility billings. Fees, yes, across the board, need to be looked at, someone ridiculous.
That's in the last slide. Sanitation fund expenses on forty-five, you getting there?
Okay, well, I got it here, um, chosen. You do that on purpose?
Just to see if there's another slide after the last slide.
He's still nervous playing city clerks, so. He volunteered.
Better childcare one.
I gotta do this, you gotta do this. We're showing an increase of over seventy-nine thousand dollars. Last year had an increase of about a hundred and two, year before, lost thirty-six. Those will be higher, next time you see us, you get the, sign it in.
And let me ask you a question, as far as the, I know it says the draft still being projected, what is that, this is the, the eyes that's on the back of the garbage truck, is that?
Yes, sanitation would be, um, the ones who ride it and the drivers.
Yeah, what's the average pay for one of those, or are they done by, um, uh, percentage of the unit and all of it?
The, it's starting pay to work streets, which is mowing, putting up signs, and many other things to do, and the pay for riding back the garbage truck at the same time, that's fifty-six cents an hour, they're the two that start the hose.
Those are the ones that we look to.
They are, though, even the, even the, the other ones, they only started, you know, even the, the semi-skilled people only start at like thirteen and that. So we have swigery, I.
Yeah, but.
Maybe we can make it on that ten. Ten fifty-six an hour. Actually, it's ten fifty-five point seven or something, David likes going out four numbers.
I inherited that.
And another, and another thing that just, you might wanna make a note, Dave, when we bring this back, I think that's though in the personnel policy, we were only allowed. To give a ten percent increase, and that's somebody coming in with a bunch of experience, and that's just not high enough, you bring in like a C and D guy who's got ten years on the job, they'll be able to bring him in much higher, an extra ten percent. That's, that's another thing, we, we lost out on a C and D guy, you wanna come here, but he's making almost eighteen dollars somewhere else.
Is there a way we could get a copy of the personnel policy?
Yeah, I think it's online, but, but now, we'll, if it's, we'll get it to you, David will send it.
You're gonna, you're gonna give us a list of all the things that you need, that you'd like to see?
Yeah, I think there's a bunch of stuff that needs to be changed in personnel po- um, policy, but as far as pay and that, I think we do those instead of trying to do everything at once, I like to do it at once, but we don't have the time to put them, but. We'll make that part of it too.
And, and the reason why I'm asking, because we really, Inver Park is a very good place to live, and we need to really, really maintain our staff that we have, that will make our city, continue to make our city good. I think they have a lot of pride in what they do, but yet still, they need to take care of their families as well.
We, we go up too much. We go up tonight, we'll be stealing the sea, bringing that down a lot.
That's okay.
But you know, getting no disagreement, Brian, it must appear that our people are on the table. Operating costs for sanitation, again, I've got Melody's notes here. You got a question on any of them? Landfill payments, going up a hundred and ten, anticipate thirty percent increase in tipping fees. Year to date, we pay almost four hundred thousand.
Is that an increase from the county, or is that just under budgeted last time?
I think it's an increase with the tipping fees for the county going up, anticipate increase of thirty percent. What number did you say? Oh, increase cost, work job year to date, six, because it's, um.
Eight, two on this one, it's transportation.
Yeah, like David says, I think she's got that wrong place, it's showing transportation.
After work on this for so many hours, I can't do the same with these numbers, trust me.
Oh, it is, yeah, it is.
Yeah, that's, to, to me, she's got it wrong place, that would come on the personnel cost, but maybe he wasn't. That position wasn't correctly built out, all the positions are over, I guess, just had it wrong, but. There's a big one, the water systems, um, fun capital. And, um, they've, they've got, uh, they're on the left side, one through eleven here, and this is one of the main reasons Rick is here, most of the stuff Rick came to us saying that, uh, I don't want, need on this stuff. So if you got a question on it, Rick will actually talk into a microphone, that we can hear it when we're actually doing minutes. Okay, the water sewer transmission, is this the headworks?
No, it's.
Page four, forty-eight, third one down. That's the.
Yes, that's six, that's, that's when we get the other employees, so we can start extending, uh, Inver Park Lake.
That's the same that's in there in this year's budget, we have used. So, there are two more vehicles again.
Well, more than, you got that meter readers, they're just, I mean, I got paperwork here from Marnie.
Marnie, the, the meter readers trucks are in very poor shape.
They're just more than our last, had our last budget.
No, we have one, the two thousand and three, it's eighteen years old, uh, the other.
The last budget, we've, we've got two for the two new positions for stormwater, we got one that we're gonna ask to carry over, because we didn't buy it yet, for the new parks. Maintenance employee. And Rick got a truck.
The four Rangers that, that current meter reader is using, it was two thousand and three, two thousand. Okay. Have a place, lines, tires, batteries, alternator, clothes, impact, food costs, probably, uh, uh, some rest of the. Speak up a little bit there.
I'm trying. He's just saying that it, it, he's the one that looks into it and gets a price for it, not Marnie to pick. He thinks Marnie should, I think he should, knows more about trucks. But her people do need new trucks.
If anyone would like to see, I'm sure you can pull what vehicle they purchased last year, what departments they went to, that sort of thing, so, if you have any questions on that, that's, that's all available.
Rick, you wanna go down the list of what vehicles you believe you need this year?
So I put it for two, two, four Rangers, for the. Waste water plant operators, the ones that they currently got in two thousand two, about, uh. Two thousand five. Which is distinction, which, you know, not everybody can use the project going out. Two thousand and five, um, which is distinction, which, you know, everybody can use the process going out in. Um, and two thousand and ten, um. They're both two arise, but these guys are going out and get samples from wells and things of its nature. They have walk off distances, they can't drive, they're two or five people. So it's going back with four Ranger. We're driving, cannot buy a four Ranger, just so you know, without the extended cap, so it wasn't option. That's, they just don't make without it, unfortunately. Um, and then Jonathan, he's got a car. About no purpose, they have really no vehicles, and they gotta go low. We gotta make arrangements for a little trailer, a boat, or somebody that loves my truck, they gotta haul stuff to the auction, like the polymer tanks that we did. Um, I saw my haul before, I have, so every day they load trailer, they're hauling down there. The vehicles they got are pretty.
Yeah.
So, so you need two of those, that forty-five, forty-six, four sixty, so it's total ninety-two thousand, the budget definitely to ask for, no?
Total is forty-six thousand, four, sorry, that's for two vehicles.
Oh, okay.
So these, I mean, the, the dump truck, if you look at the, the seven fifty dump truck. That seven fifty that we currently have. They have a nineteen ninety-eight, has air brakes. We have two thousand and two that has air brakes, but no, don't gate on it.
Those are neat.
And it has air brakes, under standard shift, which require CDOs. So I was trying to get a, this, this truck that I, 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 I got here, anybody can drive it, electric, over hydraulic, requires those CDO. And it's guilty, and they're not rusted out, these two trucks are in pretty rough shape, they never have air brakes, they gather.
Yeah.
So that was the reason I was looking at it, like Saturday, take instance, up here where they had, they had to haul two loads with the five fifty. They would have had a seven fifty, they could have hauled one of them, got out there, same overtime, same hours, so that's why I was looking at that. The wheel loader that was currently used at the waste park plant is a combination, front end, backhoe and a backhoe. They're really not designed for flipping in and out, loading things, they're very top hit. That's why I was saying something, because they, they, they look cake out, they, they dry things, dry things out, they constantly use it. And it's old, and all this equipment, we can also sell and recover some of its cost. And then the mini X, it's just in the shop again, if it rains just right, they don't start, so now they gotta. Go get another trailer, because you can't get an off-trail, it's a hassle.
Yeah.
So that's the reason I asked it for these, if you feel that, you know, that maybe we could get. The two pieces of equipment, the vehicles, as you can see where we stand with that. Yeah, whatever guys would do, we highly appreciate it.
So, so my question to you is that all eleven of these items here, you actually really need in order to perform the job professionally?
No, I don't teach them all before the job, as we keep performing, we keep walking.
He meant, yes.
Is this your list or is it Rick Whalen's?
Actually, it's his.
That's what I want to hear, that's why I'm asking.
The guy who's out there in the field working with the guys, and when he first showed me this list, I said, I want to know from mechanic. Mechanic. Has some notes and list of these things are costing some money by trying to fix it. Actually, I, we could ask for more this year, but what, what we need, what I plan to do is through this year, he'll give us these hopefully. Is work up where the trucks are and get them on CIP, so we don't have to do this every year. Because I can tell you, the, the truck, my stone drive, like wow. Bad shape, but Mike said, I just need help, I don't need the truck. But that, that's my plan, especially with it, it's so important to have this finance director in place that. We can go to and say, listen, this truck, you know, in two years is, you know, certain costs is money, so we could have CIPs over a year. Like last year, when I got here, they had to go to this and then, and this year, but to answer your question, Rick Reed made this list.
Always I said, I remember last year, the budget, Rick Whalen was here, and I, I don't remember exactly, but we got a, a lot of vehicles last year that were necessary. And I, and, and after that, he said that he didn't think we'd need any more this year. Now we're coming up with a pretty million and a half list, so. Guess the only question I would have is there any that we could get next year, or instead of getting them all this year, that's my question. It's just a wish list to get everybody new vehicles?
Ken, Ken, again, do I have to give you an answer right this second? So I can have time to think, if I'm gonna push them off.
So I think, what, so I go out and look, just so you know, when I came here, there were eight vehicles, with the whole backs were out, I mean. I think Mike Stone had four towels in there, because he was sitting on a spring, electric the second day, I had a seat three down by San Ana. You go back and look, it's seven vehicles up there. Trucks are terrible, oh, terrible.
So you're saying that these are necessary?
Well, I, I, I believe they are, but I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm going to work with you, yeah, let me go back and look.
Yep. I think it's a good idea, uh, go back and take a look at it, also, why don't you go ahead and grab that list of vehicles that were purchased last year, what departments they went to. And, uh, project as good as you can, what you think they're gonna need next year. That way we got a good picture from before that.
Does Reed, do you have a little bit of?
Do I?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I do, I drove my vehicle for two years before I got one, my personal vehicle.
Okay. Now you have them.
All right, well, I appreciate that. And, uh.
These vehicles, uh, when they get purchased, is this, uh, purchased on a state contractor? Yes. Have you ever, uh, I guess the state contract always comes up cheaper than what the fleet dealers can offer? Like Alan J. Flea, Bill and Jerry Flea.
Well, Alan J., Alan J. is the one that we bought the pass for, lied through, through Sourcewell, so it's basically the same thing.
Yeah, okay.
And Sourcewell's been beaten out, the, the Sheriff's Association.
Okay. All right, any other questions? On forty-nine, there's a rear loading garbage truck.
Yeah, that's in the CIP for the rear loading garbage truck. If it's approved, when it's needed, Anthony wants to come in and. I've only heard that in the past, some on council didn't want the side, what do you call the?
Side load.
Side load, or just the driver, so you don't have to have people on the back with the county, where they have to pick my garbage up every week. I had heard council didn't want that, because they wanted people riding and picking up all the crap people laying around. But he believes and has worked in all places, worked, it'd be so much nicer just to have a driver drive the truck, wouldn't have to have people on the back, I mean, that would be the first truck.
Well, that's what we had before, we had the single driver with the picking them up and dumping them. And then, once we went to the, uh. Recycling one, and I think that's when they turned around and made everything rear, rear loading.
Oh.
So, because I remember when I first moved here sixteen, seventeen years ago, they're all rear loaded, we had guys on the back. And then I think it was when we went to the recycling, that they all went to the ones where they picked them up and dumped them, and just had the driver, and then I was like. Don't recall, but something like we, last several years, five years, we switched back.
How did we do, I don't remember that either.
We probably were never told about it.
It's because of turnover, there's no carry through.
Yes, that's exactly it.
You'd be hard pressed to find employees that have been here at the top for more than a year at a time.
I, I will say one thing though, I, I think that infrastructure is utmost importance to the city of Baylon Park, and I think that, uh. You know, if you come back and say we really need this stuff, then I think we need to figure out a way we can get them, because, uh. Not only do people deserve a fair wage, but they also deserve a, a, more than fair working condition.
Absolutely.
And which also turns into better attitude, which means more production normally, so. I'm not against it, I just wanted to see, if there's any way we can extend it, and I'll take your word for it, maybe come up with a change, if possible.
True. Anything else on the budget? No, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
The George Lee's?
In opposition, we are adjourned.
All right, we're gonna start.
Well, we can't start it since it's five thirty.
Five thirty?
Whatever it's advertised, yeah, five thirty. You can start it late, but you can't start it early.